Yes, sir. Give me one second. You're ready.
I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Board of County Commissioners for January the 25th, 2022. Ms. Daniels, you have the agenda? Do you have any input?
Yes, sir. We have three additions to the special meeting agenda. That's a request board approval of conveyance agreement and endeavor for project school. A report on Volunteers of America funding options. And number eight, request board approval of amendment to capital engineering contract for professional consulting services. And I would request that we move the American Rescue discussion to the end. Just because these other items, I believe, will not take as long. And so there's some people here for those items if we could go ahead and take care of those.
Okay. Do you want to hear a motion?
Make motion to approve the agenda with the additions.
We got a motion by Commissioner Faye, second by Commissioner Donna Pro. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Okay. Let's see. So you want to skip down to...
Number three.
Number three. Honor. Motion by Commissioner Faye, second by Commissioner Donna Pro. Any questions? None. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. We got a motion by Commissioner Hill. Second by Commissioner Faye. Could one of you guys, one of you come up and tell us, Mr. Zach, what's going on? I can't hear you. You've got to speak up. Hold on a minute. I'm not sure that mic's working.
Can y'all hear me better now?
Ah, now you can.
Oh, I can hear me better now, too. Um, thank y'all for approving this Viva MOU.
We haven't voted on it.
Oh, you hadn't? Oh, man, we just, I just assumed, you know, no. So what this is, this is going to be a project that's going to revitalize downtown Marianna. And we are trying to put a lot of efforts into bringing some different funding methods into making this project a success. No doubt that this is going to be great for downtown. And anything that's good for, one is good for all. So if it's good for downtown, it's good for the county. At least that's what I think. And so I believe it's going to be really good. We are working with this company. They are under confidentiality at the moment. They are looking to purchase the Danley building. And when they do, they're going to be spending about, to purchase it and for just upgrades on phase one. They are looking to put in about $780,000 plus. And that's just to upgrade the exterior, the facade, and to make it look better. And then there will be multiple phases that go through the entire building. And there will be some possible retail, restaurants, possibly Airbnbs or apartments in there. So there's a lot of options. And we just really would like to see the revitalization of downtown. And as you can see, I've got Megan Bassford up here with me. We've worked together closely, me and her, with Main Street, Marianna, to make this happen. So we would really appreciate if y'all would consider this.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Faye?
I used to work in that building, and they done a lot of stuff. Jason, do you remember when that was? Good thing, good thing twenty? Yeah. And we, we actually was in one of the buildings, the engineering firm. So is a lot of the damage to the hurricane or just, okay?
And they've gutted the building as well.
Yeah, well, when they've done it before, they, they did and build it as you needed it. And so that's why I was wondering.
Yes, sir. Mr. Donna Pro.
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and offer a motion to approve the MOU.
We've already got the motion under section.
Let me ask you a question, Zach, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
As I understand it, and I'm not sure how this works, but we're talking about the reimbursing the abhorrent taxes for three years. But that's starting in year three?
Correct. Yes, sir. That's what we're asking.
The first two years, they'll actually pay you abhorrent taxes?
That is correct. Yes, sir. That's correct. And, and so the good news is abhorrent taxes will increase after all of the upgrades are finished. But that incremental tax will go into the CRA for downtown Marianna. So we're just asking, you know, a good faith effort from the county to help us out on this one, to make it a possibility. Yes, sir, Commissioner?
Mister?
Yes, sir. What's the square footage we're talking about? For three hands? Approximately?
Any more questions?
Portion of the building is actually two floors and a portion is a single, single story.
Okay. Any more questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Commissioners. We appreciate y'all.
Okay, Hunter, the next one's yours also.
So the next item is asking for an approval of a task work order under contract sixteen seventeen forty-seven for Aldi Howell Engineering to provide engineer plans review services for community developments.
Got a motion by Commissioner Faye, second by Commissioner Hill. Any questions?
Yeah, and I spoke with Will Ann about this in real briefly. I know it's pretty much standard operating procedure for municipalities, some counties, to engage engineers, to review other engineers' work. But, you know, I've, I've got a little heartburn over it because it just seems like we're asking engineers who are professionally qualified to design these things. And we've got another engineering firm that's coming in and, and looking at it, passing judgment and just, you know. Again, I'm going to vote in favor of it because I know it's kind of standard operating procedure, but it's, I'm sure it throws a bug.
I agree with you, too.
Doesn't all engineering firms have their own missions? I mean, they have bonds.
Yeah, most time.
So why, why, why the dual redundancy?
We do it with our building permit.
But the question is why?
You got an engineer signed off of that, and then you got somebody reviewing it.
Well, you've got, there you, you have someone who's not an engineer reviewing it.
That's, that's true. Like for architectural set of plans, you usually have the building inspector to review it. In this particular case, you've got somebody like David Melvin, Aldi Howell, who are professional engineers that are signing and sealing those drawings, saying that they are, to the best of their knowledge, they're in compliance with all regulations. And then we've got another engineer that comes in and reviews it, and you know, you know how that goes. A lot of times, if you're being asked to review something, it's human nature to, to find something wrong. And it just, it just...
I guess we'd have to change our policy because that's just the way our...
Well, I'm just getting almost...
No, what I'm saying is, I agree with you.
Yeah, yeah.
But when we do it, we need to do it all the way.
That's right. If it's a cost analysis, then we're paying two engineers. I mean, you got one that sort of got bonded, why would you want another one? So why, why don't we table this and just bring this back to the board and see if we need a policy?
Well, we probably need, we have discussed this. In fact, David even commented on it two or three years ago. Because I was discussing, we got someone who is not an engineer reviewing a set of plans that's signed, sealed, and stamped.
Not really. He said that differ. That's not really...
Well, if you have someone drawing, so you're saying that in your situation, you're not too...
My thing, when the building inspector reviews it, I would be completely happy if he looked at the engineering firm that signed and sealed the plans, checks to see if they are registered to do business in Florida and currently doing business in Florida. And go with it because the engineers are responsible. Now, you can say, well, they make mistakes. They do. But they got E and O insurance, and they're responsible to the contractor when you get out there building. But we need to have this discussion.
Well, who's to say that the engineer that is reviewing the other engineers' work is not making the same? That is right.
Well, you're only protected by the EOA insurance and bonds anyway, correct? So you got, now you got two. If the other one makes a mistake, then on that one, you still got the same file of the safety net.
All right.
Yeah.
So why don't we have to pay that passage daily would be my question.
So you're going to start now, not doing it, when you've done it up to now?
Or you're saying, what you mentioned about not changing it, when, when we want to change it?
I don't know.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If we've already got a redundancy, why would you want to wait and change it?
But if you're going to do it here, you should do it all the way through.
Well, I don't disagree.
It's like with the building.
When you say do it all the way through, what do you mean?
Well, just like, like you said, you got a non-engineer reviewing the engineering drawings that signed off and is responsible for that set of plan. And we got a non-engineer, we're paying to check this plan.
It adds a step to the process.
Not really.
Well, I mean, in the, in the particular case of a set of building plans, you've got the building inspector that's actually issuing a permit. So, but this is different. They're not really, the engineer that's reviewing the other engineers' work, let's just say it's David Melvin submitted a, a set of site plans for stormwater fine. That engineer is reviewing David's work. He's not actually issuing any type of permit. He's just passing judgment on whether David Melvin's stormwater calculations are correct and, and...
So that building inspector, he's not a, he's not an engineer. So he, I mean, he's got our rules, but what kind of...
He's, he's actually issuing a permit. Building. And that, that process still happens. A lot of times, and David's here, but a lot of times David may be issuing a set of civil plans for a building. And that set of site plans is actually going to be included with an overall set of plans. And they're still, the building inspector is still going to have to issue a permit for that. So I mean, you've actually got another engineer and, and a building inspector.
But he's just a building inspector. He's not an engineer.
Are you, was that your motion to table it?
Well, that's, well, I, I made a second claim as a motion, but if, if the fact of the matter is that he wants...
But aren't you just contracting out something that you've been doing in-house? I mean, isn't that what, what you're doing here? You're just contracting out, this review is a component of the community development? That review plan. Right. So your, your county engineer used to do this. You don't have a county engineer right now. So you're just contracting out, so you need this. This needs to be a part of your review. It's required. That we don't depend on the engineer who prepared the plans to look out for our obligations to review the plans. We have to have our own, our own person who answers to us and whose, whose obligations are to us in order to complete that review.
We shouldn't. Our obligation is to make sure the building is built correctly. The engineer's job is to, or whoever draws the plans, he's signing, sealing, and stamping those plans that they are correct. And when, when he's doing that, that's to meet all the building goals. So we've got someone who is not an engineer that is going behind, like David Melvin or someone like that, or Aldi Howell, reviewing plans. That's not an engineer.
Right. So this agreement would fix that.
To me, it's almost like we're asking you as an attorney, you're our attorney. You would issue some type of judgment, and then we would want to hire another attorney to look at your judgment and tell us whether what you've said is right or wrong.
But I work for the county.
So you're saying that's not like if it's having an engineer?
So this is, this is really like if you had a developer's attorney prepare an opinion for you, but you didn't send it to me to take a look at. You just, you just relied on that developer's attorney who prepared the opinion for you. I'm a contract employee.
Well, so is Aldi Howell, and so is David Melvin, a contracting service for the county.
But we're talking about their work for the private sector. But they're, they're performing work for a developer. They're not performing work for the county. We have to keep that, that boundary in place.
Commissioner, does, does somebody review your plan?
Building inspector. There's not, it's, it's a little bit different. Now, again, again, if we had hired a consulting civil engineer as part of our team, if we were designing a building, and a lot of times we'll have a consulting civil engineer do civil engineering for a set of plans that we develop. I guess if it were a county project, then yes, this, this other engineer would be reviewing not, not so much the plans that we did. It's the architect, but the plans are our civil engineering with it.
Right. In this case, a, an engineering firm, a building inspector. I mean, he's not supposed to know that, but I mean, it's kind of the same way. They're reviewing the plans on our interest to make sure they're right.
Yes, to make sure that we comply with our, our regulations.
It's yours. So...
Y'all need to Larry Alvarez, Larry Alvarez inspected, inspected them.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what he did.
Yeah, like stormwater.
Commissioner Donna Pro, I got a question for you. What is your plan? Do you, state get involved for inspecting your plan?
Who does?
State, the state, state law.
It depends on what type of project it is. If it's like, if it was a hospital job, then the state, the Department of Health, would, AKA would actually review it. Agency of Healthcare Administration, sometimes in the past, if it's a educational project, the Department of Education would review them. It depends on what type. If it's a, if it's a, a local private developer-led project, and the only plan review of those would be by the Jex County Building.
So, just Chairman, can I interject?
No.
Please. So this is actually just a task work order that even if you approve it and gives us the ability to move forward with a current project that really needs a review, it's a major subdivision based on our current process. And so then we could revisit this and bring back some detailed information. It's just a task order. We don't have to continue giving work off of that. But that would give community development the ability to move forward with a project that they currently have in-house.
You have a project now that needs review?
We do. That's what, that's what generated this realization that with Larry Alvarez gone. All I'm saying is it will serve the same purpose, except that this would give us the ability to move on with this review based on our current process. And then we could bring something back. We're not committing to doing this forever. But it gives them the flexibility to review the subdivision.
If, if we want to make some changes, we need to change our procedures. But right now, we say it has to be reviewed, right?
Right. Because in the...
Oh, I know what she's saying. We, we can pass it now.
It's a project that needs, we need to address. We don't want to hold up the developer. Then we can come back, maybe at the next meeting or the one after, and...
Yeah, we can work on discussing options and bringing back, you know, or at least more understanding of why we're doing what we're doing.
I think that's...
All right, we got a second. So he, I thought you said...
No, no, I, I didn't make it second. I made it second.
All right. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Ms. Daniels, would you put something together for a future meeting so we can have an in-depth discussion on this?
So this, because we don't have an engineer?
Yeah.
All right. So how much does this cost us not having one this time?
Twenty-five thousand dollars.
No, so the, that's what I understand, twenty-five dozen dollars for the entire year? And we do probably one or two major plans review, and it's going to be charged with an hourly rate from Aldi Howell. So it could be anywhere from a couple hour review to more extensive, a whole day review.
But I just want to, this is just one project.
What I was saying, if we want to do that, and I agree with that, we need to change our procedure.
We do. Let's go ahead and take care of this development.
Yeah, we got, you know, we don't have to use it. We do it.
Okay. All right. Hunter, the next one's yours also.
This is a, asking for your approval of the conveyance agreement at Endeavor for project school. And since Zach is here, I'm going to let him go ahead and speak about this one as well.
Okay. Mr. Zach?
Hey, y'all. So this one here, I have, we've included this. It's project school, as Hunter said. And it would be to convey six acres of land to, and also a confidential company. And they are submitting on a state contract. And it would be to build a sixteen thousand square, a square foot warehouse. And it would obviously bring some good abhorrent, and it would create six jobs. And it, and you know, it's, it's very legitimate because it will be for a state contract.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hill?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McKinnon. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate y'all.
Hunter? Pardon?
So this is just updating you on the Volunteers of America, different funding options. We had talked about this last meeting, and we tabled it. So just to kind of give you some heads up on what the options may be. For them, we have about 1.6 available towards, or under our HHRP program. So the strategies are in the process of being adopted now by the Florida Housing Coalition. So that should go hopefully smoothly. And if that is the case, we do have up to the 1.6 million dollars available for Volunteers of America to apply for under a competitive procurement process. And then potentially, if you wanted to, in our, our discussions, you could obligate some of those funds towards that development also. So not really asking for a motion, I guess, unless you want to go ahead and put, put forth what you would obligate, but...
Ms. Danielle?
I'm going to start with an apology for not being at the last meeting. But I was under the impression the HHRP, we already slated 1.1 million dollars to do the Royal to America. So how are we, are you saying you had 2.8 million dollars?
No, I'm saying total available in our HHRP, there is 1.6. So potentially, if the Royal America did get 1.2, that would leave you with a remaining balance of like 400, something thousand.
I need you to understand that, that our direction is we're hoping that the Royal America meets all the criteria and their money that you approved last meeting would come out of this money. That doesn't leave, but what he's saying though.
Leaves about 400,000.
Or it could come out of American Rescue Plan if that's the way you go.
No, we didn't have enough money in the HHRP to do both.
Then why did we do one before the other?
Because that one was yours for Endeavor.
Yeah, but I think it was because they had a deadline, and then they didn't go ahead, and we approved that. And then the other guy got up and said, well, I've got a deadline, too.
The deadline was for today, correct, the 25th? They had had that four men, wasn't it?
Yeah.
But those other, the other group, the one that you're talking about now, the way I understood it, they had already been approved for the grant and had been rolling along, and then the money came up short, and so they didn't have...
Construction costs when...
That's, yeah, that's for...
That's Volunteers of America.
Yeah.
So in this case, let's just say there's around 400 with HHRP. The city of Marianna has committed 300,000 to put with it. And so then you could potentially put the remainder that they needed out of the American Rescue dollars, which we'll talk about in more detail in a minute. That's one option, which would be about 500,000 of American Rescue. If you so choose.
How many units are they building?
Thirty-six.
Six. And it's for people who are displaced, or definitely displaced housing or something.
But they, they don't, they won't be paying. I think our discussion, they don't pay abhorrent taxes. We'll never be able to pay abhorrent tax from that.
Over any of our money.
Can we?
Except they will be held. And that's the issue, and that's how...
Do they charge rent?
Yeah, for one, someone that for four months, 400 a month. Well, yeah, like you say, this is addressing a housing need.
Because I came up with 25% of agents...
Those dollars, the rest of those dollars can't be used for anything else. 400, 400,000.
400,000 has to be go for housing. With anything above that, you need to be talking about getting money back.
And, and the city has indicated that they would participate up to...
I was waiting to see if the HHRP comes through.
What, do they have a deadline or was that?
They do. They have to know, I think it was by the end of the month for them to be able to communicate Florida housing. But, I mean, we can't give them a for sure. The only thing for sure we could say is you absolutely are welcome to apply for HHRP if you pursue that route, and that the city's willing to do this, and we're willing to do up to X from American Rescue. You know, if you wanted to put a limit on that, but that, you know, they're not going to know anything for sure until the HHRP process unfolds.
So let me see if I understand this. They're 1.1 million dollars shy.
I think 1.2.
1.2 million dollars shy. We know, we think that we've got 400,000 dollars that we can contribute to that out of our HHRP money. And then the other 800,000 dollars become potentially 300,000 from the city, leaving them still 500,000 dollars shy, which could potentially come out of our care's money.
Or they could downsize the program, project, just a little bit to deal with...
Or the first bunch, not get their money, that's our state, from the state, and we got 1.6.
I think I asked that question, or somebody at the city asked that question, if they downsize, then it begins begging them something else.
When will we know the HHRP?
Anybody's guess? I mean, I don't, I don't want to give you a date. That may be wrong, so...
We're just waiting for that to move through the process at the state, and then we'll be able to put out a notice of funding or, you know, that process for them to be able to actually apply.
So a lot of ifs and ands. Ifs for both parts.
Well, we approve the other one.
Yeah, no, they might not get approved, and it might not, it might not happen. Is that right? Is it possible?
Yeah, it's no guarantees they'll get approved through the state.
Well, we ain't giving them money. We just obligate the money if they get approved, right?
On the Royal America. That's right.
Well, if the Royal American didn't get approved, then we'd have all of the other money, so that it could very easily be this one.
All right. What's a pleasure, Board?
I'm giving 400,000.
400,000. Is that going to help them?
Well, they'll still have a 500,000 dollar gap.
Is it going to help?
Well, is that projected because of the inflation? Everything going up, or are we looking at hard numbers?
Well, there can't be no hard numbers unless you build a day.
I believe whenever he was here last time, he explained that they applied for a certain amount. They waited until they got funding, and now they want to start construction, and then they realized there's a 1.1 million dollar shortfall. So that, that funding is like actual numbers of what they're actually missing to get it off the ground and started. So that shouldn't change.
I don't see some, I don't be in favor of, if we're, if, if we use the 400,000 dollars out of our HHRP money, that means they're 800,000 dollars shy. Why not go to the city and ask them to split that difference, which city, instead of 300, 500, 400, 400?
Well, what would be the possibility of them repaying some of this money?
Or not their point, business plan, I would definitely...
Well, it wasn't in their business plan either to come up 1.2 billion.
It was short.
Can they, can we recoup money from that program?
What funds do you have there? They're, they're taking this from a nonprofit standpoint. They're, they're assuming this is a pro bono.
I understand what you're saying, but we're going to give them a half million dollars of our money. And I think we owe it to the citizens to do diligence and see if we can recoup it.
Well, I agree with you, but that's what I'm saying, just like, where are you going to get that money?
Where you getting half me? Nine hundred thousand?
Well, I know. 400 is the...
I mean, I'm sure their business, business plan model, they showed that when we paid extra dollars, I imagine that, I mean, they're always paying, what? 70,000 acre, 300,000 for five acre?
No, I verified it. It's 130,000.
130,000 total? Okay, okay. I thought he said something like...
He did.
He did.
They need to rewrite their business plan, if it's legal for us to do that, Michelle.
To, for us to rewrite their business plan?
Said.
No. To ask them to repay money we give them.
I, I see what you're saying, but I'm just saying, with the, the business plan they had, I'm sure just, just land costs, infrastructure costs, building costs, I mean...
That's the whole thing.
That's the whole money.
We're not a bank.
I understand that, but that's one, that's my point. I'm like, you know, at some point...
Well, you're not a bank, but under ARPA, you can make grants.
Well, not alone.
That's right.
It's a, it's a grant. It's a...
No, if you use the ARPA funds, we can make a loan. We could...
Yeah, but can they pay it? That's the point. Have they, has their business model showed that they are repaying the kind of money that we're talking about? I would say no, because why are they asking for it? That's my point. I mean, you're right. I mean, they're, they're not...
That's why I said they need to rewrite the business.
Yeah, but I, I sure it's low rent, so, yeah.
Yes, Michelle. Yes, sure. Okay.
I mean, I'm in favor of the money we have in the HHRP, but I'm, I'm very skeptical. We haven't went through this and just got, like, some of the ruling on it or what we can spend it on. But I, I'll be giving that money to this project. I mean, again, it's, it's something that they ventured into, and I'm sure if we... I mean, again, it's, it's something that they ventured into and I'm sure if we made this offer to a lot more companies, I mean, we didn't know, they come to us and this they did, they're looking for almost a million plus dollars. I mean, I give. Well, to me, again, I, you know, we've been talking about housing and what a problem it is for housing shortage. You know, I, I'm gonna call for a motion that we would use up to 400,000 dollars of, of our, uh, American Recovery Dollars, up to 400, if the city would split the difference, that 800,000 dollars difference with us and also the 400, instead of 300 and 500. If they don't, it just goes away. I mean, I, I would say that in my opinion, we'd fund you to table this to attribute, because again, we haven't digested what financial we have in there. That's what we, the board has as a, as a group. As far as Americans. Yeah, exactly.
Now, can we discuss it as a part of the American Rescue discussion? That's no problem.
You wanna withdraw your motion for this time, Paul?
And then we'll discuss.
Don't bring it back later on. All right, we'll skip over that for now, please. Well, where are you going? Well, who's going to do that?
Yeah, well.
Okay.
So this is a.
Have we got Evan on the line?
No, we got one more item.
Number eight.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So this is a request for Board approval of capital engineering assignment, uh, assignment agreement. So capital engineering is being bought out by HMB Professional Engineers Incorporated. And so Michelle has done the proper paperwork to transfer that or to do an agreement with the new company name.
Second, got a motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Donna Fruth. Donald, is there anything you wanna say?
Yes, sir. We appreciate the opportunity to provide services to the board and the board moving forward. Uh, this is a tremendous opportunity for Jason and myself. We'll be, we'll be having ownership in the new company moving forward. So we'll be right here in the same place. We're prepaying the same employees to be able to provide expanded services to the county. Um, they'll be able to provide survey, water, wastewater utilities, uh, planning, environmental, and also some structure.
How long has HMB been in business, John?
1964.
1967, wow.
And this is, uh, so you guys, we've been working with this company on and off for the past couple of years. It's a new name to you guys, but we've actually done some grant writing work with them and done some engineering services in other states. Uh, most recently I helped them, uh, get a brick grant application for Frankfort, Kentucky for a major wastewater facility over there. So we've been doing work on and off with these guys for since 2018. Um, they got offices, they're corporate offices in Frankfort, Kentucky. They got offices in Indiana, Tennessee, and Alabama.
The first standard for is, uh, decision making. Decision making, you be able to make local decisions with standard?
Yes, sir, absolutely. Uh, that, that's really important to us moving forward. Uh, and it's a tremendous opportunity for him and I. Like I said, we'll have ownership in HMB. That's part of the negotiations for this, uh, purchase. Uh, this, it's, uh, tremendous for us and by this opportunity to grow.
So stay capital?
Or, no, sir, we'll be HMB.
So when's the transition name wise on happens?
February 1.
Well, good luck to you guys. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries, five zero. Thank you. All right, Hunter.
Okay. Before Hunter gets started, I just wanted to briefly tell the board that, um, whenever we receive the American Rescue dollars, um, and because it took so long to have the final rule, which we received two weeks ago, um, Hunter really took a proactive response to it by digging into the interim rule, um, working closely with Evan Rosenthal, who's on the call with us today. Um, the rules were very, very strict and narrow. And so, um, he created a process for locating projects that would qualify. Um, and so, um, did a lot of work, a lot of work, um, working with departments to come up with projects that, uh, really have been floating, some of them have been floating around for years, um, that just have never had a funding source. Um, or others just strictly met the criteria. Well, two weeks ago, it was a late Christmas present, I guess. The final rule came out and it really has changed the game on what you can do with these funds. However, I told Hunter, proceed with presenting what you had put together. It was a beautiful document. Um, and it really is just a starting place for you all to use as a, as a, uh, a guide to add to, take away from, um, you know, however you see fit. But I did wanna recognize Hunter for the hard work he did, uh, with the original rule in place, so.
Thank you, Hunter. I know you read it and I read it.
So Hunter has.
Go ahead.
He's gonna give some background info.
Uh, yeah, sure. So, uh, essentially what we've been operating off of was different, uh, spending, uh, categories that we could operate from, from the interim final rule. And one of those was the, uh, re- recognizing any revenue loss that has been caused by the pandemic. Under the interim rule, there was not any revenue loss recognized, but under the final rule that's been just announced, the county can take an option to take a one-time standard allowance of the 10 million dollars or the total amount of our award. And we can use those funds as revenue replacement dollars, which means that you can use that for the provision of general government services. So basically, anything that we do on a normal basis, we can use for these funds. So the first ask here is asking for your approval to take that standard allowance and report that to the Treasury and allow the drawdown those funds as revenue replacement dollars.
So maybe.
So they're gonna have to report on those extensively, but it'll open up our ability to.
I have a motion by Commissioner Donna Fruth, second by Commissioner Hill. Uh, you have a question?
So once we do that, that means the 10 million there becomes not pretty much as much as the rule. Nine, nine point whatever, yeah, nine million, one something, uh, nine fifteen thousand. Uh, do we still have to follow the guidelines at that point since this will reverse and come out of the Treasury's action?
So they haven't announced what the, what they're gonna make us follow. They, they promised that it's gonna be streamlined reporting requirements. So there's still gonna be some requirements for us to.
So how can we make decisions?
Evan, are you on the call?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is Evan Rosenthal with Neighbors Goodwood and Nickerson.
Um, it says that, uh, we can use it for general government services, I think is the correct verbage. What is that?
Yeah, so if you elect to, if you elect to use the, uh, the standard allowance, um, for, for revenue replacement, uh, as you indicated, so that, that allows those dollars to be used for the provision of government services, which Treasury is defined as any service that's traditionally, uh, provided by a government. And they give some examples. This, it's important to note that the examples are not exhaustive. These are just, you know, for, uh, for, for illustrative purposes. So the examples they give are construction of schools and hospitals, for road building and maintenance and other infrastructure, for health services, for general government administration, including staff and administrative facilities, environmental remediation, and then the provision of police, fire, and other public safety services, including both for capital equipment expenditures and then also for, um, for operating expenses, like for public safety, uh, staff expenses as well. Um, it's almost because these uses are so broad and so flexible and Treasury has indicated that this is the most, the most broad and flexible, uh, basically allowable, uh, category of allowable uses under ARPA, it's almost easier to talk about this in terms of what you can't use the funds for. And so there, uh, you cannot put these funds into a rainy day fund or into reserves. You also cannot, uh, fund a pension fund. You can't use the funds to pay existing debt. Um, and you can't use it to pay, uh, settlements or, or judgments. Um, now, aside from those things, virtually any other expense that again, it falls under the, uh, the type of service or program or activity that's traditionally provided by a government, uh, could be funded, uh, under this revenue loss prong.
To include roads?
It would include roads, correct.
Any more questions? Re-broad. Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. We'll follow that.
Okay.
Yeah, do whatever we need to do.
Okay.
To, uh, let us follow that trial.
Yeah, our first report is gonna be due in, in March of this year, so we'll have to report. We took the standard allowance and we'll use this motion as a, as a formal, uh, way of adopting that.
I think that's a smart way to go.
When, when do the funds need to be expended by? Wouldn't there some?
You have to have, to have them obligated by December 31 of 24. They have to be expended since 26, December 34.
December 31, 2026.
26.
And so, uh, next item here, just kinda as for discussion, planning purposes for planning ahead, uh, I put out a separate handout in front of you guys that has some orange highlights on some of those projects. And so the orange highlight, the ones are the projects that were initially approved under the interim final rule. This is what me and Evan and department directors have been working on to make sure that they were, um, following the Treasury guidelines. Now that the revenue replacement option is available to us, that pretty much makes any project available project. So I kinda just threw some more in there that we had submitted that weren't eligible under the interim rule. That could be eligible under the final rule if we chose to do them. But big decision, lots of money there, lots of different options. But this is a general planning document and we're just asking for your direction on this.
We've got a little time, uh, before we have to, uh, have all of this money obligated. So, uh, what we may want to do as a board, take the list that, uh, staff has proposed, you look at it and identify projects that you feel we need to, uh, fund. And then we'll bring it, at the next meeting, we can discuss it further. Uh, and then we may make a decision as to what to do then, or we may decide to pick a different route. Uh, but I think there are certain major projects that affect the entire county that we need to look at as a board. But then I think there are probably projects that we may want to fund in our districts that we need to, uh, make sure they're on the list. Does that sound reasonable? Yes.
I wanna say something. Um, I know we've got some projects that we need badly. Some of these on this list and some maybe not. I just wanted to think about endeavor. A perfect opportunity to fix some things that we don't have funding for. They can bring businesses in here and it's gonna affect the outcome of our county in the next few years. Uh, you know, we talked about roads. Well, we all got roads that we can pave, the Poozer Road and Mashburn Road. The rest of Mashburn, that is real important to the endeavor property. Um, you know, we're looking for funds for the convention center. Um.
They've got 2 million dollars in there.
Yeah, I know, well, yeah, but I mean, that's what I thought. We need to look at endeavor.
That's why I said, look at things that directly affect the county than any revenue that's left over. Uh, look at projects in your district.
Well, we can spend it right there. There's some things that we need to do that's on this list. We know that.
And one, one thing I think we need to really be mindful of is that we make sure that all the citizens in the, in the districts are, are the best we can. I mean, I, I looked at most of this, most of this is around the hub of Marianna. That's no district state. But I mean, I know we come up with this with the TDC or one of groups years ago, there was no representation of people.
I agree.
Oh, I know, right?
And we all fight for our area.
That's right.
But endeavor is a county.
Oh, no, I, I understand that. Yeah, I support that. I actually do. But I'm just saying, we need to really make sure that each municipality, areas of the county is represented or not.
Are they getting some of these funds too?
They're getting their own allocation.
Now, how, how, how do we know what they're getting?
You can ask them. It's public.
Pull it up.
Most of, most of my cities are getting, um, a few hundred thousand dollars, maybe a million. Their, their numbers aren't anywhere near.
No.
Well, it'd be nice for us to know that Snee was getting.
Yeah, but I know, when I say the cities, I'm talking about like, like Lake Seminole, where projects that.
Oh, we could spend almost all that on Lake Seminole.
Yeah.
I mean, really.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying. I think each commissioner needs to come up with that list that they want done and then we collaborate that and then come together with some of these projects, the county, and the whole endeavor is good, some others are good, but I can actually focus on.
Oh, I, I agree, but let's look at it there.
Yes, absolutely. Danielle?
So, um, my question is on page two, the premium pay for the fire rescue, that's already a committed item, correct? Just wanting to know, Paige, that's committed. And then I don't, yeah, I don't see any of the legal fees that we've committed to, damn, where's that at?
What, where?
Yeah, they are.
Somewhere, I thought I saw.
They are.
No, I see down there at a very, you know, 60,000. I was wondering where that was. So that's the 60,000 and the 725, you cannot remove from this list because of, um.
Who won that?
Were the, I guess my question would be, are these numbers, I like, a couple of these, like the courthouse air hammer replacement? That I know is a project that needs to happen. Is that a pretty good number? Is that a current number or is that?
That is a correct number from a company that we got, uh, in conjunction with.
Recently, recently.
Like two months ago.
Same thing with correctional facility ventilation report, that's a, that's a good number, you feel like?
Yep, that's what we received.
Well, and also we, we need to look at, I know we did, uh, the premium for fire rescue, but we also need to look at road and bridge too, because I believe they are.
They will, they will qualify, would qualify.
Yeah, but we're already spending 725 on one department and there, of, of that money. So we need to look at, uh, I think sheriff's office, employees, and, uh, the ones that are critical there, especially road bridge. We have a lot of parents there.
So I, I can clarify the 725 now, uh, so actually it should be 575 as specifics to fire rescue for the course of three years. Um, the extra little bit of, uh, was in there to maybe offset his free, uh, minimum, minimum wage requirements for different employee offices.
That, it was that thought, let's increase that if there was some department.
So what's that?
There was 575. 575 is obligated and so is 60,000. So those are your two.
So it's 60, 575?
575 premium day and 60,000 for transparency tracking is obligated.
Well, what?
575,000, 575,000 is obligated for premium day for fire and wastewater. 60,000 dollars neighbors given at Nickerson for transparency and tracking legal services.
Oh, legal services.
Yeah.
That's obligated. So the pay, I, I knew, I never knew that amount. I get into it entirely. So 575 was for 36 employees of fire rescue?
For three years.
For three years. So that'll be a huge number if we try to do double road and bridge. But they, they qualify.
Depends on what you give.
It's complicated. It'd be a huge number.
Okay, any more comments? So everybody's comfortable, uh, with what we're doing?
Uh, there's one question. Is there any information you need from us staff to help you make your decisions on different projects?
Um, I would like to know the number on the water sewer project or, uh, the housing subdivision up there?
320 acres.
Okay, so we can, we have some estimates, but I'll get with, uh, David to get more up to date estimates on those and get it kinda broken out by the different projects that we could do potentially out there.
And aren't we looking, David, are we using, uh, that workforce grant for the, uh, water and sewer for autism?
Yeah, so we're about to go out for that final phase job growth grant and take care of all the water and sewer needs. Campus, stuff, stub it out nearby the sheriff's office, be ready to run, call through the roof.
Come, what's that lean? What's that lean, David? Probably we're stubbed up at the sheriff's office to the interest of endeavor. I mean, I endeavor, uh, where we got Poozer Road for the housing project at 320. You, you're saying that the project, where would we have to run the utilities from currently?
Go around the front, right there.
Sheriff's, okay, from, from there to the front entrance of the proposed 420, how far is that if you gotta guess?
Got, you got, you got.
Right. Mile? Oh, I don't know.
One of the sheriff's.
Okay, what? Well, back during budget, we talked about Poozer Road, paving Poozer Road. And there was some talk about funding for that. What was that? Does anyone remember?
Why this grant?
I know part of that is.
Uh, so Poozer Road, do we have two different grants going on right now that we, one of them you apply for, one of them we have received funding for? What the first part is the mitigation area right off this, uh.
Seventy-three.
Three, um, that'll pay like the first quarter mile to kinda mitigate those drainage issues through the HNGP program. We have an application in through the governor's job growth grant that was submitted a month or so ago and for the remainder of those costs to pay the rest of Poozer Road. So that's, we're adding that kind of way.
What's that cost?
Uh, estimated cost to pay the Poozer Road, I think it's like Wind Road to the, uh, the other. the other side there is like $3 million roughly.
Yeah, it was three or three point four or four or something.
They had it shifted right over, didn't they?
When you say job growth grant, is that a new one or the one we crossed here?
Different application.
Do we know when we'll, do we know when we'll know?
No.
We don't. We still need to look at that. Then what about Mashburn Road?
Mashburn, David, didn't you just comment on Mashburn?
I thought it was always been approved.
Just to circle out.
Yeah.
The city brand is saving at 2,500 feet. You go out there now, you can tell the fact you're around the bend. We're not going to. And you know, we didn't have quite enough funds in that to finalize all that. We've got it, we've got a fund that saves everything, but all of the water in there. City sewer projects and the fact here, the sewer, the coming, sewers taken care of. And then the city reapplies, we rule out the structure of funds for additional funding to finish everything. It looks pretty good. But we don't have anything from people to stop to...
He has all the way.
And gas wouldn't, you don't have to back out of gas or something. Why don't you have to back out of it?
Gas, yeah, what it is, I took out gas, I took out road striping, I took out everything that we could put back in labor. But it's primarily the gas. We did the water, we did, we did put an asphalt down.
Do we have an estimate on what it would take to do the rest of Mashburn?
I think we have ran that estimate.
What's 2,500 feet cost? Probably about a mile.
We've got an estimate on it. It's got a few challenges.
About a mile, like. It's about a mile from where they're stopping all the way out to do that.
You get all that.
What about that? Can we gather up what the cities are giving?
Yeah, I can give you that.
Yeah, I'd like to see the salaries on Road and Bridge and make the sheriff's office too for some of that.
What are you going to do?
Well, we already done our rest twice.
I know, I agree. But all, all.
All right. Anything else? Danielle?
Well, y'all said you'd revisit the volunteers of America during this part.
You're right. We've got to go back to that. All right, what do y'all want to do?
Well, the only heartburn I have is just the fact that when I don't get out of law court, which we saw some, some obviously housing issue for 36 units, I guess, that all, did we, two or three veterans? What are they, they weighing up or down?
I think it varied, like one, two, three veterans.
Well, this budget, if you want to call it a budget, has $1.5 million in there for the 1.5 that's under, listed under premium pay, but it's endeavor affordable housing.
That was for the Royal America, and I think with the consideration that there might be some need for volunteers of America.
So, so the 1.5...
I thought they had a $1.2 million shortfall, which would, I think he was basing this off of 1.1 million.
So the 1.5 under this spending plan is basically kind of like a bucket that we could use for either covering some soft costs for like some planning element at the Poozer Road site for housing development to install that water and sewer utility connections from endeavor to Poozer Road. Also for housing opportunities for developers. So it's kind of like a, just a parking spot for that, those funds to say, kind of wait and see what will happen. That's kind of the idea of that estimate of 1.5 million.
Yeah, and I think that's to the point that that's the only company beside Royal America that come over asking for money from both entities, us and the city. If there was more people out there, the 320 acres we got there, which is not ready yet, I got it. But there might be investors that want to come in here and invest some of that money into our project on a larger scale. And they may, you know, they can use that maybe for sort of no diligence money or some down payment on a larger loan that they're getting to go out there. I mean, 320 acres, it's a huge project. By the way, David, are we still working on those site plans or whatever we was drawing out for those?
Yeah, I've got...
About how much of that land is usable? About 25% not?
A little more than 25%.
I know, I know, I know you said that number.
I had a plan shoot, I think I've sent two, five, seven.
Yeah, please do.
I have a...
To all of us, hey?
Have you?
Send them to Hunter or Will Anne.
Yeah, I just wondered, you know, again, so some of that money, I think, again, nothing against the that company has come up here, but I think that more people knew that we were about to hand out money to private individuals, giving out money. I know there are 501(c)(3), but they're covering administrative costs under there, so it is a revenue source for them. I just, I just wish we had more people that, you know, wanted to build, that we could distribute that money to, except one, that's not only on general and no, no abhorrent or citizen for that. Housing, yes, got it, but there, you can fund somebody that's got another project that have a long time to do it, so.
Again, that's still affordable housing.
Oh, yeah, oh, I get, yeah, I get it.
$100.
Yeah.
Level of affordability is answering a big need.
Follow to your, to your point, that $400,000, and then go back to the next city, Marietta, to help, get a cost, what it's, we just recruit $150,000 from that premium pay. So I mean, you know, in totality, we have $500,000 worth there. Do, do logic.
So the city, you think the city would give you up? I mean, that's a lot more of their pockets. I mean, I don't...
They committed to 300.
Yeah, they committed.
You know, again, I don't know why they wouldn't commit to just splitting the, you know, once we put our money in.
The acre, the 400 apiece?
400 apiece, that's a little bit more power.
Plus the 400.
Yeah, but, yeah, we'd have one, two minutes.
But that 400 could also be used on the 320 acres.
That was not a point. That's why I said you can find developers, you know. And that's why I'm hesitant. I think, and again, I do say that since the housing, but we've got projects too that we like to do that for the 320. And if that's something, we don't try to pave it, we don't try to put the infrastructural stub ends down there. If David's working on the plans, the layout of it, that money could also again generate revenue there in our project. I'm assuming we could go low, low beam some or, you know, one, one, I don't know that low. But I mean, you know, you could, you could get something that's more marginal to, to the total project, so.
I was just going to add that, remember, even just two weeks ago, we were just getting the final rule. So even when you all discussed this just a couple of weeks ago, it, there wasn't clarity that there was going to be so, as much flexibility as there is. So at that point, it was kind of exciting to have a large chunk of money dedicated to housing. But you do have more flexibility now with the final rule, you know, to be able to do some of these other things.
I'm hesitant on the $400,000 on this project because we're committing a large sum of money that we'll never get back. If there was some way we can recoup our money, then I would be more inclined to vote for it. At this point.
I didn't ask this question.
We have to do more due diligence.
Are they going to basically be sectioned eight home? I mean, based on the value, not, not on the qualification. I didn't know, because $400 definitely fits within that parameter of the LMI.
Short answer, no, they're not.
What did you say?
They're subsidized housing.
No, 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 I know. I just mean, I mean, for the value of the house, I mean, about $400 a month is, is a pretty low return.
So what's the qualification? I mean, I imagine the government giving them money to give.
Well, sure, yeah.
Displace, didn't he say displace people is what he was dealing with?
And that they might, they...
And I guess they...
Forever period of the pattern.
Yeah.
All right, so what are we doing?
I'd say we come back for the next meeting and address it, leave it to this.
They will have more clarification on the HHRMP charges as well to offer you some better guidance. I'm telling you, it's probably...
Move the table this...
Okay, you've got a motion by Commissioner Paye to table, second by Commissioner Hill. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Michelle, would you do some research to see if we can in some way recoup our money in this project?
Not possible.
Why not?
When you say, when you say recoup our money, can you clarify?
Let them pay back the loan, make it a loan.
Make it a loan and start again.
Now, I know according to this plan, you could make it a loan. The final rule, we can do loans.
That's the rescue?
But you still have to expend that.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you.
No, this is...
I mean, if it's a loan, you still have to have that, I mean, you can't.
How, how they don't generate enough revenue off $36,000 to pay back? How much we talk $400,000 on our side, $400,000 on their side, $800,000 on $36,000 and still paying that bill back?
12. We need, we need... We need to come up with 600 and the city needs to come up to 600 to be equal. It's 1.2.
Well, I think the city is actually putting some of their HHMP.
They're putting the American Rescue. Well, I think, I believe it is. They don't have HHRMP.
They don't.
Not that I know of.
All right.
Heard them say.
The rate vote was 4-1.
Can I ask a question to clarify? Are you looking to make this a program for other entities to apply for? Or is this just specific to this particular developer? Like, are we, are we going to do a generic grant or loan program? Or is this just one split?
I'll say what I envision is, not envision, I'd say what, what, oh, troubling to me is that not in a negative way as far as who presented it, I don't understand the low income, is the fact that we're between us and this 1.2 million, is that what we're agreeing on? Of basically money that's allocated for different things, also broader perspective when it comes to the, to the American Rescue Act now as far as guidelines. But the money that's allocated for that project, there's going to be, I mean, basically all they're doing is, I guess, like a mini Royal America. Because Royal America, how they make their money is just off administrative fees. Now, they pay, I guess, their S corp or C corp, they actually pay corporate tax. This company does, the 501(c)(3). So not only, so I guess administrative is the only mechanism they have of generating revenue to pay administrative fees. And so in this situation, why would we not not open it up to other people? We have a pot of money sitting here that they, someone could come in here hypothetically tomorrow and say, I'll build you 20 homes that fits some type of criteria.
So that, that's kind of where my question was at it. How do you know that this applicant is the most qualified recipient of the fund?
That's HRMP fund. This American Rescue is not for everybody to come in.
Oh, I realize that we don't use it for such to facilitate them having to finish other money. So we are in this, it's usually...
We have it.
Yeah, we have it. Again, I'm not, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't want...
So just take...
I mean, I want the housing, but...
Let's get some information and do it.
So you want to wait?
I'll wait.
You answer?
We're already...
I take one.
We're through, we just talked.
But Michelle's got a question.
I was just asking for my research purposes. Am I, am I looking at just this specific applicant and this money? Or am I looking more generically?
I would, I would look more generically. I would. I'd see what other options we have.
But where, where's the pot of money you're talking about?
Well, again, if we're, we're coming up with $400,000 or whatever, well, I'm not saying that either. But if you get some of the developers that's going to do a million dollar project, they have 10% diligence down to a bank. They might come here and say, listen, I'll build you six homes. Let me have $100,000. That's their down payment for a million dollars. I'm just saying, there might be opportunities for it. I mean, and again, I'm not advocating that I'm not having. I'm just saying, there, there may be other avenues to get this money for. Again, it's to facilitate the end of the day, the same thing, which is housing.
I guess my question would be is if these, these American recovery dollars have to be expended by 2026, then we would have to, if we were to loan those dollars, is that what you're talking about, the American recovery dollars?
No, I wasn't saying loan, I was saying giving it to them. I mean, $100,000, a million dollar investment, I mean, that's...
Mr. Pickup was talking about actually...
I said you can do loan.
Yeah.
I want some way to recoup our money.
What are you going to...
You're going to do a loan or, or have a loan. That's what you make...
What are you going to do with the money you recoup?
Right.
Trust me, it'll go into the pot and it'll be gone before you see it. Going to general revenue.
Evan, Evan may have already tackled this issue.
Evan, are you still on?
Still here.
You hear that?
Yeah, I, so I think you can do this loan. I, I think what I would probably suggest though is that rather than doing it directly with ARPA dollars, you fund some, some sort of other project that's more clearly a general governmental service with the ARPA dollars and then free up general fund revenues there to do this, to do this contemplated loan. So I think there's, there's probably a way to do it, but you know, how we sort of tackle this from an administrative standpoint, I think that would be sort of what we sort out there. I think that, that may initially, I think that would probably be my recommendation to, again, just find some other clearly eligible use of the funds that constitutes governmental, government services and then free up some, some general fund revenues there to put this towards a, towards a loan, if that's the board's direction.
Everybody get that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, anything else? We finished? We are adjourned until...